I'm going to open this evening the Deerfield Planning Board at 7:02 on October 1st, 2018 in the Deerfield Town Hall on 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield. There are no minutes to preview, so that would be the first order.
Do you want to read the agenda?
I'm reading it.
Oh, I see.
That's the first thing.
I see.
I'm just going to warn you that there are no minutes.
Oh, sorry.
And then we need to review the mail. We'll have a public comment. We have new business in A and R on Mountain Road here. And old business with updates, if available, on projects in progress, which include the Mill Village Road Dollar General project, Setright Road Frontier Solar Project, the Railroad Yard Road Solar Project also, and 31 Elm Street Cumberland Farm Facility. We have a notation here that we will be looking at Dumont Company project on Marigan Way, but we have no information about that. We haven't seen that before, have we?
I don't think we have.
I've never heard of Dumont.
Yeah.
It's EPD, so nothing to do with us.
Oh, so there you go.
Oh, well, even better.
Yeah, it won't have anything to do with us.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we just don't know much about it. And we've never seen it. And then any other business not reasonably anticipated, that would be finally on our agenda, and then we'd set a date for the next meeting. So, should we review the mail later?
Well, do we have the mail to review?
Oh, look, that's usually my job. One of this folder, it says, "Other Items."
Sure.
Just other items. This is a postage thing. Did we review these notes?
What is that, last month's?
This is the 20th. Did we already look at these?
I believe you did.
Last meeting.
We did last meeting, which was...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, no mail, no review.
I'm going through it right now. There's nothing to bring to the forefront. It's just Greenfield town things. This one should probably be read aloud. This one is from the Town of Waitley. Legal notice, Town of Waitley notices hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the Town of Waitley will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 11th, 2018 at 7:00 p.m., which is next week, right, sometime?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thursday.
At the town offices for Sandy Lane, Waitley. Wayne M. Huckowski and Scott Huckowski have applied for a special permit to use the existing greenhouses on their property at 149 Christian Lane for licensed marijuana cultivation and for the variance from the setback requirement. The planned marijuana establishment will be operated by its legal owners and licensees who comprise Urban Grown Incorporated. These include Stephen Hebert, CEO of Hadley; Michael Hebert, COO and manager of Holyoke; and Scott Soars, CFO of Long Meadow. Application for the permit and variance is to be considered under the provisions of the Waitley zoning bylaws.
So, we open the meeting.
Go ahead.
You're welcome. Here.
Could you pass that down, John?
Excuse me?
Would you pass that down?
The letter I just read aloud. Another one, Town of Waitley. It's a special permit to replace sign atop the Bank of America ATM at the Irving Oil, close to the town line, so I read that one.
Sure.
And that one will be heard at the October 11th Waitley's EBA meeting as well for Sandy Lane.
So, we read that for the, what do you call it?
Agenda?
Yep, the agenda. And we have no minutes. And John's reviewing the mail. And there's...
So, we have the public comments in that section.
Yep.
You want to keep telling that?
No. I'm good. Feel really great now.
We good with the mail, or are you still...
This one here is a little more... That one should probably be part of our...
Yeah.
It's got to do with the town of Deerfield.
Yeah, this is from...
That's a little more than just reading aloud. I think it's going to take a little...
This is from DEDIC.
I think it's from the zoning enforcement officer about things happening at the industrial park.
No, it's to the zoning enforcement officer.
To the...
From the lawyer, DEDIC's lawyer.
Yeah, so I read that. I can summarize anything.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, that apparently some, one of the...
We got it.
The occupant at 5 Industrial Drive West apparently has done some things that DEDIC thinks is inconsistent with the agreements that they signed about a new driveway access, so they're looking into it.
Okay, so it has DEDIC as its own...
Nothing to do with us. We don't have any jurisdiction over there, so it was more of an advisory.
All right, very good. Here, so that was all the mail, the two Waitley.
What was the second Waitley one?
It's for a sign, a new sign on top of the Bank America ATM over at the Irving Oil at the intersection 116 and 510.
So, it's not important. It was just something that...
Well, it's near the town line, so I felt it prudent.
Do you want to pass that back?
Pass what back?
The mail?
Mail? I'd like to just put some notes in about that. That was one that I think...
All right, I'll leave it up.
Well, the sand, the other Waitley one is in there if you want to pass...
You think we should put that in the minutes, too?
It was read aloud.
This one was about the pot, the cultivation of pot at some greenhouses or something. Unless you think it's not important to put in there?
I don't think so.
I don't think it's important to put in.
Okay.
We never do before.
It becomes public record once it's read, that's all.
Okay, all right.
So, apologize, I'm late. I'm John Waite, the chair. Did we already...
The late John.
We haven't introduced ourselves yet.
Maybe we should do that, and we have a full quorum. We have a, not just a quorum, but the whole group. So, let's introduce ourselves. Do you want to start, John?
The whole kid moodle.
My name is John Baronas.
Rachel Blaine.
John Waite.
Kim Camosa.
Paul Ellis.
Roger Seddon.
Max Zietjes.
Excellent. Thanks for everybody being here on the first Monday of October. So, then the next point on the agenda is public comment, and what we'd like to do is just to help residents, if you have a comment on something that's not on the agenda tonight, we take a couple of minutes just to hear from people. So, is there anything anybody has a comment on that's not already on the agenda? Okay, we'll go to new business. Our new business is in A and R on Mountain Road, plan to convey a portion of 24 Mountain Road to 20 Mountain Road. Is there anybody here that can tell us more about it? Come on up and just introduce yourself. We have the plans. Let me just make sure we've got the paperwork.
My name is, my name's Deb Henson, and I am the owner and resident at 20 Mountain Road. And you have the plans in front of you. I turned over all the copies that I had from the surveyor, so I don't have anything to reference, but I am going to be purchasing a quarter acre parcel with frontage on Mountain Road adjacent to my lot from my neighbor, Richard Eaton. And it's an existing lot by the tax maps, but it's no longer a separate building lot. Some point in the past, the frontage requirements changed. It's got 75 feet of frontage. And so, he has agreed to sell me that portion, and I'm going to be adding it to my half acre lot at 20 Mountain Road, which also has 75 feet of frontage. And so, that's the proposal that's in front of you. I'm sure you'd like to know sort of why I'm doing that. The sort of the next plan, when I get my ducks in a row, so to speak, is to add in addition onto my home. And I would like to do an attached garage, and if the dollars and cents work out, I would also like to construct another living unit to make my home technically into a duplex. And so, I would have 150 feet of frontage, which is 25 more than I need by zoning in the CBR district for duplex construction.
So, that would be my one question, is the current CVRD is 125 feet?
Well, it's 100 feet, but if you're doing a duplex, it requires a 25 percent...
Okay, so it's 100, okay.
Yeah.
So, by him transferring ownership, he isn't any less compliant?
He will still have 100 feet of frontage.
Right. Because there's probably some legality in there somewhere if he didn't have...
Absolutely.
But it's all...
No, he's left with a fully conforming lot himself, yes.
And we have the application, and it's stamped by the town, and the fee was paid. So, you're not, you're actually not creating more parcels, you're actually...
Changing a lot line.
Just going from one to the other, so the fee is 100. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the plan as presented.
I'll second the motion.
John should check it out some...
Can I just clarify? CVRD, this is CVRD? So, it's 100, oh, and then 125 for, because there's a note.
Well, she has 150 with this now.
Well, no, no, the person that's...
Well, I want to make sure the one that's being left over is...
Right, because there's probably some...
Which it is.
If he didn't have enough frontage left over, there probably is some...
And by right, you can build a duplex?
Yes.
But on the, again, we're not endorsing that, so on this, it says, "The planning board endorsement under subdivision control law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning requirements," so this does not mean that it's a building endorsement.
Yeah, we're just endorsing the A and R.
Right, it doesn't require subdivision control.
No, I know, I just, it's just personal knowledge.
This doesn't, does this say anywhere on it, "Not a building lot"?
No.
You just read it somewhere. I thought you pointed it up here.
It says, "The endorsement on the subdivision control law should not be construed as either an endorsement or an approval of zoning requirements."
But she's actually taking that line out, so it will become part of the broader property.
I'm now going to have 150 feet of frontage and 3/4 of an acre.
Yeah, we normally require that our A and R say on it, "This approval does not constitute a building lot."
But when she pulls that line out, it's...
Technically, it's not a separate lot.
It's moving from one to another.
It's still one lot, yeah.
If it were the other way around, John, if she was separating it...
Right, off.
Off, and turning it into a new lot, yes, then that line...
So, there's likely to be a move over, really, is what's going on.
Well, apparently, this was a lot that was built, that was laid out, but never, never taken advantage of.
Right, right. If you actually look at the town zoning map, that little parcel does exist as a separate parcel already. It's just a non-conforming lot with its current dimension.
Seventy-five feet.
And so, he's going to sell me that parcel so I can add it to mine.
Right, which is making your property a conforming lot, which is always...
Always a good thing.
Desirable, right?
Desirable, I guess.
Are the rules changing?
Good or bad, I'm not sure, but desirable.
So, we have a motion and a second. Who's second?
Public comment? Do you want a public comment or anything? No, okay, this...
It's an A and R.
It's an A and R.
Okay.
Well, is there any discussion?
No.
All those paper?
Hi.
I oppose, abstain, 700.
Thank you.
All right. Who's got the...
You know, it worked last time very well. We put all of these together.
And you just walk over to...
Yeah, that worked.
Well, I got three plus the milar, which is what we need, but less than four.
Well, then, you're in charge.
I'm sitting down this time. I didn't know that running around.
Actually, that's, that's an extra one. You can take that one back. We'll sign four of them, and that's a plan.
Okay.
There's another one, too. Right, is this an extra one, John?
No.
Those two are. I got, I got four paper.
Yep.
I think we just need three papers.
We have that one as well. We need three, and then you'll get the milar back, so you can file it.
Okay, so I'm only giving the milar back?
Yeah, and those.
And those, too.
The unsigned copies.
Okay, you can...
Do you want the other one signed? We can sign it for you.
Surveyor said give it to sign as much as you can.
Did he? Good here.
Is he related to the neighbor? Yes. Cousin-y.
Yeah. I know, I saw it.
Or is there a neighbor connection?
Did he work for, he worked for Eaton?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, I'll take one more of them.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was very kind of him to...
Yeah.
Like, go with the property. Huh? Yeah, but I mean, he's still...
No, I, I...
Most people wouldn't do that.
I had asked him a year ago, just, hey, do you ever think about it? He's like, no.
Then you got out your checkbook, and it all changed.
That's it. I don't need to cover it. No, cover, cover. Happens, happens.
Well, I've been spying about a seventh consignment.
Yeah, we're good down here.
Yeah, I don't, it's...
So, should I wait?
Yeah, you should take the milar back, and then...
And you were going to give me one sec.
And then one sec. Yep. I don't know. Well, maybe I won't ask.
I didn't sign anything.
No, I was going to ask her another question, but she didn't say anything during public comments, so I'm good. About her neighbors.
My neighborhood?
About your neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't ask her.
I didn't hear any complaints, so I don't, I'm not asking.
I'm going to fertilize my new hedges and see how fast they grow.
There you go.
Something in the paper, somewhere there.
I see, I see, how's this going up?
Fertilize something, it's in the paper today. I don't know.
All right. You check us off.
I did, I didn't check you here, I checked you and Roger.
Roger, can I wait? Oh, yeah, and I couldn't even wait for him.
Evidence here.
Everybody get an agenda?
Yep, will you sign it? Of course.
I think they just wanted...
No, we should get five of them. You need at least, at least four. You know, the more the merrier.
That's yours. Is your pen, John?
No.
Okay.
Check. Oh, here.
Okay, this one here, she... Here's your signed one.
Max doesn't want to sign it?
Does Max want to sign it?
She's got more than she needs already.
Go ahead, have Max sign it, too. You might don't get it, you might...
Did you see when?
Directions, yes.
Maybe he wants us to put the boxes back.
Yeah, she said just to put them all in the same office, in the planning board office.
Except for the Dollar General.
So, as some members are finishing signing the A and R, I just want to go over the old business. So, what the plan is tonight is we do not have a continuation of any public hearings. It's been posted. So, I thought it would give us a good time for the planning board members in particular to make sure that we kind of know what's going on, because we've got a full plate in the past couple of months. And I, myself, am even not clear necessarily about who's doing what when and what are, what we're going to end up making decisions on. So, I think if we go through some of these items one by one, make sure we know, you know, who our technical review person is, who our administrative review people, and what's, what do we schedule.
Could you also review, since I've missed two meetings, what is the ruling on that?
And that's another issue that came up last meeting, is that in order to vote on special permits in particular, you know, board members have responsibility for attending the meetings and/or catching up with the information.
Okay, so it just wants me to look at it here and do it online?
Well, I think we need...
Pat Smith was supposed to delve into that.
You need some more clarification on that.
Okay.
If you watch it on...
Generally, if you watch the recording of the meeting, that covers it, but I didn't know if it covered two meetings, you know?
Yes.
Who does?
And, you know, for some reason, we're worried to catch up on, get a good explanation of what happened, read the minutes, I think that can also count. And then you got to sign something saying you've done that.
Right. Do you think we need an FBI investigation?
I think so.
Absolutely.
I think so. You should get Mr. Flake to make that decision for you.
Deb, you've got what you need, Tim?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you get the milar?
I got the milar.
Okay, good.
So, from what I'm hearing now is, even if you've missed two meetings, as long as you review all evidence, including videos, and attest to the fact, then you're good.
All right.
But Pat Smith is checking the...
I got through half of the 12th, and I didn't get to the 17th yet, so...
All right. So, we're going to have our, because several of these are big projects that we're going to get, well, Pat Smith's looking into it, and then we're going to have council really make sure we know it's clear. And then, of course, we have to go through, back to the minutes, because last month, we thought Roger was at it, and maybe anybody wasn't, so we have to make sure that our minutes are correct as well. So, everybody should volunteer that information to make sure you were at meetings.
And what meeting would that be? Which date? The 17th, maybe?
Wasn't the last one, it was the one prior to it?
Oh, the 12th.
Well, at the last meeting, we reviewed the minutes.
No, it was the 20th, I think.
That's what I said, it wasn't the last meeting, it was the one prior to the last meeting. So, Paul said the 12th.
Well, no, the 12th was two ago. So, the 20th, it was 20th?
We said two...
20th of August, the 12th of September, and the 17th of September, so that gives you three meetings before today. So, is that any one of those you didn't make?
I made the last one, the one prior to that I didn't file.
That would be the 12th, then?
I said the 12th, and that's what you said.
Why, the 17th?
Somebody was, no, the last meeting was the 17th, and the one before that was the 12th, right?
Correct.
Right, but Roger, was that both, were they both...
August 20th, he was not.
20th is the one.
He said to remove himself from the August.
It was the 20th?
Yeah.
August 20th? Okay, all right. So, that was three meetings ago.
So, I just, so I just want to highlight to the people in the audience, thanks you for coming, but that's, that's the plan tonight, in case you weren't sure. We're not, we can't take new information, because it's not a public hearing, so it's really more administrative kinds of stuff. So, let's start with Dollar General. And I asked the town officials to give us all the paperwork, so behind me is all the boxes. We have a box for each of these projects.
Mm-hmm.
So, my understanding, well, with Dollar General, the public hearing has been continued, and we have hired, the town has hired Ty and Bond as a technical review, and the update I got from Gene Christie, who was the lead person...
When is it continued to the what date?
That's a good question, and that's something we should check on and agree on.
What date?
November 8th.
November the 8th?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I had a question, too, John, before we get to the end of it. There's a current one we're dealing with Cumberland Farms that we need to discuss tonight, too, I understand.
That's on the agenda.
That's the fourth.
The last one down there, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Well, it's, I guess what I'm saying is that these others, we're catching up on where it's at, but that one there, there's actually some stuff that we need to decide, right? On that particular one, that's different than all the others. Is that right, or not?
They're all different.
They're all different, so let's go through them one at a time. And I don't think it should take too long, but I think we need to go through them one at a time. So, today, I got the, just a recap of what's happening with Ty and Bond, is they met with the applicant's engineers to discuss the comments that they covered last month. The applicant, I've been told that the applicant's engineer did perform test pits, but Ty and Bond was not present. Gene is working with them to directly resolve this, because if you remember, last month, we said we wanted the third-party reviewer to be there when they do the test pits. So, I'm not really clear on why test pits were done without Ty and Bond present, but they're going to address that.
Curious. And again, which one is that?
They took those test pits a long, long time ago, John, and I don't know if it's the same test pits.
Well, there were some that have been...
More...
She's talking about ones between the last meeting and this one.
Oh, okay, I, because I knew they did some a long time ago, just to see...
Yeah, there was supposed to be a third-party test pit review in different areas, not just where they...
I didn't know in the test pits you were referring to, it was for the septic system.
I think that's what I read in one of the emails.
Anyway, I don't have the details. I'm just, the update, what I got is that the applicant's engineer did perform test pits, but Ty and Bond was not present. I am working with them to directly resolve this. That's all I know.
And that's the Dollar General store.
Yeah, so I can just give you these for the minutes if you want.
I've gone, okay, I've printed out some of the minutes, some of the emails that we got. But, yeah, if you just give me something you want in the minutes, tell me.
Ty and Bond says they have finished their traffic review, and they will be issuing their findings this week. So, that'll be forwarded to the town. Now, there's a question, actually, that when the town gets information like this from our peer reviewers, it should go to the planning board members, we should have a chance to review it. It becomes public information. The town has, I don't know, three or four weeks to get the information out to the public. I'm often, I'm often asked by residents, has the traffic study been done yet? Has the review been done yet? Can I see it? We don't want to withhold anything, so we tend to just release it, but sometimes, there's a few back and forth clarifications. So, I don't know if anybody here has a, should we release it?
Well, it shouldn't be released until it's out of the draft stage, because it can become convoluted. You know, well, I read this, well, that wasn't the final copy, you know what I'm saying?
So, the applicant submitted a traffic report last time, and so that's what Ty and Bond's been reviewing, and then they'll issue a letter to us, which then we'll talk about. So, that's a draft, that's kind of still a draft, is that what you're saying?
I don't think it should be, I mean, it still should be public knowledge, but not sent out in electronic form, perhaps, I guess what I mean, until it's final, final, just to avoid confusion, so everybody's looking at the same final, final?
But, yeah, the issue is, we're in the middle, we're still in the middle of public hearings, which means everybody can comment on it.
And what's the date on that document, John? I've got them at home, so what's the date on that email?[1631.11] I, I've got him at home, so what's the date on that email?
This is today. It's an email from Gene Christie, this is just.
I thought I printed it out, but I haven't found it.
No, 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 you didn't, oh, you did get it.
Yeah, I did get it.
We got it just a, an hour ago.
Yeah, I just happened to read it, so I just.
John, John Ronus' point should be well-taken, that it's not that you're trying to hide anything, to keep everything transparent, but the problem arises if every time something comes in, you turn it out, 'cause exactly what the select board went through with these marijuana host agreements, because you end up with changes going back and forth. At the end of one week, you have seven different portions, and then somebody will say, well, this one said this, I've got it in front of me, well, yeah, but that one isn't, you know, and it does cause more problems, it causes more problems than the benefits.
We can release it, we can.
So I think the way to solve that, that problem.
It's completed at that.
Or at each meeting, you, you.
Disseminate the, whatever, if it's draft number six, while everybody's looking at draft number six.
And that's, that's, I mean, that's why we're having public hearings, because it's not, you know, it might take longer that way, but everybody's looking at the same thing at the same time.
Correct.
So I think that's, and I, I think we're, there's good evidence that we're not rushing anything through here, because we continue the hearing several times, and if we need to, we'll do it again, so it's, I don't think that's an issue. So the other, Gene also says, I have not received any further documentation from the applicant's engineer at this time, so again, they're, they haven't had.
Any.
From the last meeting, Ty and Bond gave them things to do, and they haven't responded yet, so, again, they have until November 8th, until the next public meeting to do that.
Can you just clarify something? I did, I did read that before it came, and it made me wonder, we, we said we would accept what the COMCOM did in our stormwater plan, or are we?
Asking them to redo it.
Are we asking them to redo it? Who is asking them to do those test pits? Are we doing it because of stormwater?
Yes.
Or is the COMCOM doing it for some other reason?
No.
Because they had a wetlands thing they were talking about in the back, right? Somewhere they were, wasn't there a question on that?
My understanding is, is a question for the COMCOM, not for us, we're doing stormwater.
Okay, alright.
And site plan.
The, our, our engineer, our third-party suggested, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, we have, they have for the septic design test pits, but there's none on the other side of the property to determine the soils for the stormwater, so it's an entirely different set.
So it's really our thing, not the COMCOM then, right?
Separate.
Well, the, the stormwater's under us, so that's why, that's why I was trying to get clear in my mind, whose responsibility these test pits were, and whether, whether we need to state what we want our peer review to do when they were supposed to be there.
Well, that's what they're doing.
For, for stormwater.
For stormwater.
Right, but not for what he's talking about, the wetlands, COMCOM only deals with wetlands, so that's, and that, again, it.
I got the idea those pits were to do with the sewer system, not the, not the COMCOM.
No, no, they weren't.
They weren't?
No.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I need to get clear in my mind, then.
This, this all, this is from our Ty and Bond, who's reviewing it for stormwater, nothing to do with COMCOM and wetlands. Whether there is another issue with COMCOM and wetlands, that's maybe, I don't.
Oh, yeah, but my point was, is that, as I thought it was said, something said that there were to be three pits, and that the, the peer review would be there, and if somebody from the, from the planning board wanted to be there, they could, and now you're saying that, that nobody did it, they just did them, and, and nobody's reviewed it, from.
Oh, I'm not saying anything except what I read.
Okay.
Let's put that in the minutes.
Right.
The applicant's engineer did perform test pits, but Ty and Bond was not present. Ty and Bond is working with them directly to resolve this.
Okay, alright.
Period.
Period, okay, I'll put that down.
That simple.
Alright.
Thank you, Paul.
Let me have that, then, if you, if it's just a copy, and I'll underline that specific.
And then, Pat Smith is our, doing the sort of administrative review of that project, and again, at the last meeting, she had 23, or I think is what I counted, items that were not met yet, so, and she, I spoke to her briefly today, and she has not received anything yet back from them, so, again, they, you know, the date was November 8th, so that's, that's the update on that. Is there anything else about, about Dollar General?
So if, if, if there is a question, do we spur COMCOM to look at the wetlands again, or who's, who's, so we, we received that email, you know, notification from a concerned citizen, saying, this was reviewed as a wetland, potential was not deemed wetlands by Conservation Commission, but it's now, that, that has expired, it would be, and I feel like we need to respond to that, but I, not because, just because it was addressed to us.
So we did ask the COMCOM, and COMCOM, as everybody might be aware, has gone through some, how many people, and who's on that committee, but I believe.
Steve?
No.
Oh, right.
Louis, what's Louis's?
Mission.
Mission.
Is the chair, and I've had some back-and-forth with him, and I, I think they are trying to figure out if they have some authority to look at this, now that both, when, the last time they looked at it, was before the trees came down, and also whether it's DOT property or not.
Right.
Because I'm not sure that that was what was looked at prior to. And now, the new issue apparently is that there will be some construction on the DOT land, because that's where they're gonna have to put the driveway.
Right.
So that it, it needs to be looked at.
Right.
So I will try to follow up on that, and make sure that.
Yeah, Darren Gray made it, you know, he brought that up, it needs to be looked at as a singular unit, whether or not, you know, mass DOT, the people own the property, it's still gonna have construction and impacts on it, so it needs to be looked at as a singular piece of property.
As, as the stormwater on it.
Correct.
Okay, and then, on that, I read some in the paper about this, about the, the meeting that I didn't come to, and it, it made me wonder about, have we set on the design of the building, or anything like that, in our group yet, for the site plan review?
So far away from that right now.
That's, that's still in, that's still in progress, right?
There's comments made at the last meeting, and they haven't responded to them yet.
Well, I didn't know if, if this, if the planning board, if we had discussed it at all, because I had some other thoughts from that, that I wanted to put in, but not until we're ready to discuss it as a planning board, you know.
You mean the?
Well, any information that needs to be held off until the next public hearing, you can't, you can't bring in information.
Right, well, I, without knowing what went on at the previous meeting, that's why I was just trying to clarify in my mind.
Nothing, nothing about.
I am watching it now, I got through that, went through the 12th, and I still gotta do the 17th, so.
Would this be a good?
No, the 17th wasn't about Dollar General.
No, I know, but it still has to do with other stuff, so I was gonna watch them both.
I guess this is a good time to talk about November 8th, whether we'll have a quorum here or not.
Is that a Monday?
No, it, as it turns out, the first Monday of November is the night before elections, and we can't use the town hall.
Oh.
Second Monday is Veterans Day, can't meet then, so.
So what day is that?
It's a Thursday.
We went to a Thursday.
And actually, yeah.
I'll need to check that, but I probably can make it, I just have to find out.
John, I, I think I'm far enough along in my project, where even if, you know, I'm still involved with it, I can make it.
So you've missed several Dollar General public hearings? Just two?
Two, that's it, we're in.
Honestly, because we had, we had stops and starts, so that's very.
Right, the first one didn't come, because, you know, so.
I, I believe it was July and August, and.
When's our next meeting, John?
Right now, it's November 8th, I couldn't find that we had scheduled.
Well, the 29th, was there anything planned for the 29th?
I have it too.
What's that?
I have it too.
October? Yeah.
I have it too.
I remember hearing, I, I think perhaps we changed it.
See, this would be nice if I had my meeting.
To November 8th.
Uh-uh, because this might be about Set Right.
Are you talking October 29th?
Yep.
Yeah.
We have, ten over the line of Special Town Meeting.
Or maybe that's what it is.
Okay.
Well, as we go through this checklist, make sure we know when each of these, the next meeting is.
So another one is? So it's sounding like the 8th is the next meeting. And that's the regular meeting, plus the continuation of the Dollar General?
Dollar General, and I believe the solar project.
Solar, yeah, is that right?
Both solar projects?
Just one.
Just the one.
Is that right?
Just the railroad one.
The railroad solar?
See, that's why we need to do this. So when is the Set Right one?
Don't you usually make notes of when we change dates, what the meetings were?
Well, we were, we had to change one date after.
Is that the Ostrowski property, the Set Right, or we had the type of point out as well?
Usually we have minutes, too, to help us with.
Sorry.
But I figured out of seven of us, we oughta come up with, so who's, who knows when, when we're continuing the Set Right Road one, too? Was that the people you chased?
Well, there was no discussion about the Set Right Road one at the last meeting.
That was not Set Right. The problem was, okay, if we moved to Set Right, if we could do that, we were going to get peer review opportunities for that, because we're moving to that.
Right, but we still had to have set something.
But they would've had to sign an extension at this point.
I think Set Right was 29. Because we needed.
I agree with you.
That was Set Right.
I think you're right, we continued that date, I thought.
Yeah.
And when did you continue that?
The fifth Monday.
What meeting did you continue that from?
Last one.
The last one, which was the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay, so continuation.
We haven't, the railroad project. I don't think we had it public.
I just remember on the 12th, there were the two, the Dollar General and the railroad.
What day of the week is the 29th?
Monday.
Monday.
It's the fifth Monday, that was the thing.
Oh, we did talk about how that was like a free day, maybe, but now, it's gonna be a special town meeting, I don't know how we can, I think we said 7 o'clock, that's probably when the.
Well, if we, if we change the date within two weeks, we, we're okay, I think, right? I mean, we can.
So I did ask Pat about that today, I said, you know, because it's not, it doesn't need a new public notice, but people need to be informed, otherwise defeats the purpose, and it's easy if you, if you're like, if it's after this potential scheduled time, you can always tell people, sorry, we can't do it tonight, we're gonna do it in two weeks.
You can't do it before.
Do it ahead of time would be.
Right.
Not, not cool.
So you're thinking of piling it on the 8th?
Well, no, if we, if we announced the 29th, then that's, that's when it should be.
We don't have to.
For the Set Right.
But, but then, if the, if the annual, the special annual meeting is here, town meeting is here, how, where are we gonna meet? In the kitchen, or?
That is the 29th, I think that's.
It is 29th, Monday.
And it's definitely gonna go, kid?
So far.
Okay, I didn't know, because you said tentatively, so I didn't know if there was some kind of.
No, it's, it's set up for that, I think we'll get all our bylaws.
Go ahead, Wendy.
I speak.
When may I have information?
We could possibly change that if it's critical.
No, it's not, I mean, we could change.
Because I'm, I'm having warrant articles melded away as time goes by, so we're gonna talk about it Wednesday night, so, the warrant.
And it would, and that would be normally at 6 o'clock?
Six or seven. It will be probably very short, I think we only currently have three warrant articles.
I mean, knowing that we do get people interested in this, we should be on camera in a big room, I guess, we shouldn't, you know, try to go in a small room or something.
There's been a lot of.
Well, yeah, you need to have room for audience members.
Concerned about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they were gonna bring back details of different things, that was a whole list of items, they were gonna bring back to the next open meeting, right?
Wendy said, what did you say, Wendy?
I think we could move it a little later, if, if necessary, select the.
The warrant, oh, your town meeting?
Yeah, we haven't closed it. I'll have to check tomorrow.
So when you say later, Wendy, another day, or later than evening?
Like the 8th of November?
What's that?
Probably another.
Date?
Monday night, yeah. But I'll work on that tomorrow, see.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to crush you.
No, no. I need to work on it tomorrow.
I think it would've been in the 20th, August 20th meeting would've been.
Yeah.
It wasn't, I looked at the calendar, I didn't see any.
Alright, so let's call our next meeting the 29th.
Did, did Set Right, did anybody come back with all the?
So let's just, so let's just go on over here, so, sorry.
Well, I'm not talking about Set Right.
Oh.
I'm just, I'm.
You just said Set Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that's what we were talking about.
No, I, I, we started talking about the Dollar General.
Dollar General continuation.
Oh, okay, because you were talking about the continuation of Set Right Solar to the October 29th, I thought.
Yeah, we did go on.
And that's why I'm asking the question, is that the one that we had the whole list of things that were gonna come back with answers to, they said, how many trucks, how many trucks were going up there, how many?
Yeah, he came back with that answer.
And did they, did they come back with the answer already?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that's been done, okay, that's why I'm asking.
They came back with a lot the other day.
Yeah, okay, good.
Are we still on Dollar General, John, or?
Yes, well, so I just wanna inform people that on November 8th, I, I might not be here, but that's, if everybody else, if we have a quorum, and there's enough people that have reviewed the thing, then that's terrific, and Rachel likes running meetings.
Yeah, she does. She was warming up tonight.
Yeah, just a little.
Okay, so we're moving on from Dollar General.
So I'm gonna put this back in the Dollar General box, that says.
Is it, are you done with the Dollar General box?
Done with the. Well, I mean, we're gonna, are you gonna be pulling it back out to later? You know, we can, we can bring them all in at the meeting.
What's that?
Well, I said, are you having fun?
I'm, I'm, I'm just sitting here watching, I'm just.
Alright, so Set Right Road, we did, yes, we talked about that the last time, they, they provided a lot of responses, then we realized that on most solar projects, we have a, a technical review person, and we had not done that, so we decided to do so, and we said we would use.
Pat, was it Pat?
Well, no, technical review, which is, because, because it's stormwater.
Oh, okay.
And site plan review. And that.
I got it, hold on.
Wendy, was that an email today that we got? The Set Right Road Solar, was that gonna be with the COMCOM, or?
Here, no.
I'm not aware.
Priscilla sent, I thought she sent an email about that.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get an email, you don't have an email from Priscilla about that? About not having, that we haven't engaged that person yet, even though we were supposed to have, but we can do that this week. And, you know, because it is in a, it's in a field, we, we had sort of said, several people commented, that what, what they were planning on planting is probably better than what's there now, but they did a stormwater report, we should have a review of it, a technical review. Hopefully, you know, it shouldn't cost too much, but was that our agreement?
Yep, yes.
I know there were some concerns, because now the water's gonna be, like, concentrated in certain areas, and there could be potential for runoff now, because it's gonna shed off those things, and just hit, you know, one, whatever it is, square foot, instead of that whole panel and stuff, there was quite a bit of discussion about that.
So that's why we, we went ahead and.
And they, yeah, so here's all.
Okay, so let's.
Calculations and things.
Make certain I would go that, Set Right Road, technical.
So do we want to just pick one tonight, or did you think you already did pick one?
No, we did not. I don't think we did.
Oh. For some reason, I thought we were using the same one that we're using on Dollar General, but I could be wrong.
We.
See, this is where, sorry, I, I think COMCOM was involved in this, too, and we were gonna use the same one, but now I might be getting right, mixed up with Banham Southern there, the railroad yard one.
Right, because they've been very active.
That's the one, we're gonna use the same people, so we need to hire someone, alright. The last time we put out a request, it was put out to five people, and only two bid on it, because the people were busy and stuff, so I think we should just do the same thing.
Same five.
Yeah, yeah, this is, you know, quote, five or six per quote, you know, and it's a pretty simple project, so hopefully they can just get back quickly, and then we can say yes, and, or tell the applicant, and then get back to them quickly. All right, you know what I was also wondering? This would be a great idea.
Yes.
You can't wait to hear this.
I know.
Oh, I, it sounds...
At the edge of my seat.
We're all holding our breath, John, so get to it.
So there's several big projects here, and I feel like I'm kind of in the middle of them too much, and I think that's why I'm messing up a lot.
Yeah, because...
So if someone would take that Set Right Road one and, um, and work with Priscilla and the applicant to get that thing done, that would be terrific. And who wants to volunteer for that? And then someone else could, could handle the railroad yard one.
Well, I would go with the railroad yard one because this guy, I, I'm, he's ready to me...
He's already been in touch with you.
I know.
Yeah.
All right.
Because I had, because we continued the railroad to the November eighth. That's actually continued to then. Then we were commenting, because that's gonna be a heck of a night if we got both of those. Um, and we had, I'd actually, that's how I got in touch with him, because I had to get...
Right, we had to inform him.
I had to get, and he's been kind of, um, so I'm happy to follow up with, his name is Kyle.
Kyle Purdy.
Purdy. And...
And Set Right Road is McCaffrey.
Well, if you tell me what you need to have done, John, I'll, I'll do that one.
I will give you, uh...
We got it, we've got to pick a, 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 a technical peer review person.
Yep.
And, um, then they, what is our date for that?
So Set Right Road is also called, um...
Frontier Three?
Yeah, Old Frontier.
Old Frontier.
Old Frontier Three?
Yeah. Well, yeah, oh. Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not looking, I'm looking at my emails. These are all the emails from today. Just trying to remember.
And so when are they coming back, the, the, uh, Set Right?
The twenty ninth.
The twenty ninth, okay, yep. All right.
Which is quick. That's the thing.
Yeah, it's, it's just a few weeks away. Three weeks anyways.
So here's a, uh... So, so this was, um, Pat's administrative review of Old Frontier. And, um, the estimate was that it might cost up to four thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, the applicant came back and asked, well, does it have to cost that much, or if there's less work? And the way FERCAG works is they only bill by the hours that they actually work.
Right.
When I first, when she first told me this, before she wrote the memo, I, I thought that was kinda high, because it's that flat ten acre section there. And I thought it was kind of all straightforward. But then she reminded us about the other solar that we did, and it's just a lot of things you gotta go over and check off, and make sure they're done properly. And so to keep us out of trouble, it's, we do, I think, we could use her assistance. You know, I'm, I'm hoping, and the applicant's hoping it'll cost less than that.
You're thinking you could get up to that many hours, John, that's what you're saying?
It could, yeah.
Well, I think the way those were set up is that the money's put in there, and whatever's not used is returned, so.
Right, and so, you know, so I think the applicant has said yes to this one, and then they're waiting for the, uh, so that's the one from...
Okay.
So that's the, the Old Frontier on Set Right Road, the administrative review. And then we just need, then we need to get the technical review. So if you can follow up with Priscilla...
So this is administrative review, admin review.
If you can follow up with Priscilla and Pat Smith to make sure we get the technical...
Okay, yeah.
Review, get the applicant to approve it, and have them do the, mostly the stormwater calculations is the main, I think.
For the technical review.
Yeah.
Because there's, yeah, Pat was facing a lot of similar things.
I will do that.
Our experience with Lake.
Yeah. Yeah, we, you know, we discussed at the last meeting, we, we did a lot about how, and they need to come back with their new plan, where their wires will be buried.
All the way, not just partway.
Their current plan still doesn't have that, and I think it's still that there was something about the road they needed to make some adjustment with.
I was just gonna say, they're gonna make road improvements, and we should probably see, accept the town's help on that, what was past practice.
Was it just the town roads, or was it that farm road that's gonna go back in?
Well, that's their driveway, so that's their issue.
Okay.
The town, Set Right is a town road, but that driveway is their business.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Four hundred feet of town road.
Like, as Set Right goes, that's a town road.
Okay, yeah.
As it cuts across.
Well, I knew that that's where the underground had to be done. That was where the underground went from underground to overground.
No, the underground is to the, uh...
Underground takes off by the corner there.
Yeah.
There's a pole, I think.
To the right, but anyway, to the...
Right, because I asked them, and they go to Neesman, they're not going down their driveway.
Okay, change, okay. All right.
All right, good. So you got that, and that's scheduled to be on, uh, ten twenty nine, Set Right Road, Old Frontier. All right, anything else on that?
And they're gonna have to, Paul, they have to send the changed plans.
Yeah.
They have to what?
They just have to send in their changed plans.
Okay, so you, we also need the site plan review where they changed it to bury the cables and...
Bury the cables and...
Okay. New site plan, new site plans.
And I think some of the vegetation, we talked about the hedges they're gonna plant, I think they need to show that too.
Well, I'll, I'll read, look at those, I'm gonna look at those tapes of the, of the meeting, so we'll have that too.
All right, then the railroad yard solar project is, um, so let me put this back into, uh...
That's what I was...
So Rachel, your handle on that one, right?
The thing about this one...
The railroad one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a couple issues with the railroad one that I just wanna clarify. So, um, we, we opened a public hearing last time with them. But then I sort of learned that maybe we shouldn't have, because they need, um, they need a variance, they need two variances from the zoning board. This is an extra large solar that they're proposing. It's, um, over two megawatts and over ten acres. It's an extra one. That area where they're, where they wanna put it is not zoned for that, so it's not allowed. So they really can't ask us to do a site plan review on, if it's not allowed there. So they have to go to the ZBA first to get a use variance, which is, I think, kinda major. Because otherwise, because it's really, that's like redoing our whole zoning.
What is that zone, John?
They don't have it.
It's zoned, um, it's, it's not zoned industrial, it's zoned commercial.
Commercial.
Two, because there's some industrial, see, I thought, and the railroad owned this property?
I think a lot of us kind of thought it was industrial, because it's East Airfield Railroad.
Right, it's really odd, it's not industrial.
But when you go to the map, it's called commercial two. And so, um, so, so on our use table, it's a no, it's not a special permit, it's a no. So in order to change that, I guess that's what's called a variance, to override our zoning, basically. And there are setbacks, they wanna go from a hundred, uh...
Twenty-five.
To twenty-five, which is a pretty major change too. And, um, and, and we've, we've told them this, and they, they, they keep saying they wanna keep going with the site plan review. So I would, I guess I'd like us to make the decision to say, no, we, we, the, the problem is we kinda opened the public hearing already, so it's continued. But, um, so I think we need to tell them that we're gonna, we can't go any further without...
Well, it's always the chicken, chicken and egg thing, and it, it...
We could do a joint meeting.
They need their variances first.
Yeah.
Otherwise...
On this one, very clearly.
Yeah, and they use as precedent, unfortunately, the, um...
Lake.
Lake, Lake Street Development there, up at the, up at the gravel yard.
I, I don't know nothing about that one.
I know. So apparently on that one, we kinda did them at the same time, but that was, remember, that was the first one we ever did, a solar project, we were new. It was a little, it was a little bizarre, and I think we didn't all handle it so well. You know, it turned out okay, but now we know better, so they, they really, I don't think they can use that as precedent. You can use it as precedent, I don't agree with it. We, we learned better now. We should, they should get a variance, their two variances first, and then we submit.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
Thank you very much. Put that in the...
John, I, I know we talked about this a little bit, because we were questioning why people would come to us and they needed a, a variance, or that they needed to go to see the zoning board of appeals. And I thought a long time ago, someone said, that's the last board they go to. And I, it doesn't make sense, because if that gets shut down, why come here and talk to us, because it goes no...
Well, how can we possibly be voting on something that doesn't yet exist?
I agree with you, John, I'm just saying, I think this was, somebody created this rule, I don't know if it's a really a rule, but...
I don't think it's a rule, I think it's, you know...
Well, I was on the zoning board at one time, and there were some issues about that. Which, which board would you go to first?
You gotta get your variances first, it's...
I tend to agree with you, John, but that isn't the way it is. So someone needs to clarify that with the town.
The town offices.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a council, I guess, legal council, but we, we, but I think we can also say...
How they're directed is what, what Roger's pointing out, that there may be kind of a protocol, unwritten protocol, that is, no, you wanna go to the planning board first, and then the ZBA. And we wanna say, actually, that can't be a one size fits all, for one.
Right.
And very potentially, you need your variances first before any kind of, you go to the...
And they might ask the same questions before they grant that variance that we would ask anyways. I don't know, you know, so...
Yeah, I think that would, they would, they would address some of the things, and then we would get that information.
Right.
And take it into consideration in the second.
Right, but unless that, uh, variance legally exists, we're granting permission legally?
We're just saying it.
No, we wouldn't be able to do anything, because it wouldn't comply.
That's what I'm saying.
As it exists, so we'd have to reject it.
Right, but then it's a no, unless...
Right, you, you would get a no.
Just like if DK moved, I mean...
I think we should get some clarification, whether they have, need to get their variance prior to coming to us. That would end the discussion, I guess.
Well, can we...
The answer is yes.
Can I just say that?
Yeah.
I think we just...
So unless...
Well, in your mind, it is, but...
Well, I think, how about this, let's, I would rather put it on the applicant, it shouldn't be on us, it should be on them. If they can prove to us, they can come to us first, without a variance, then we can do that.
Okay, that's fine.
But I'm hundred, you know, I'm ninety-nine percent sure. And, um, Pat looked into it, Pat Smith looked into it, we haven't had the council on it, we can, but, but I think the applicant, that's the applicant's responsibility, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree.
So if they can prove to us that we...
I'm just saying what past practices used to be here, John.
And we're trying to make...
Past practices, right.
But we have a, somebody wants to ask a question.
Slip it through the planning board, if they say okay, then it's one of those things, well, it's better to ask forgiveness than permission.
Certainly.
Now, with you guys stating that they should probably have the zoning, wouldn't that also, that apply to the Dollar General as a rule? Because there's variances that they need to get from the zoning board, so shouldn't we? I would say yes.
And that's where this discussion really started, Nick, I think, was with the Dollar, Dollar General, they should've went there first before they even came to us. And that's what spurred this whole conversation, right, Rachel, you remember?
I'm confused.
For their parking spaces.
No, no, it's just, what, what variance do they look for? Because I think there's a certain size building they can build in that area.
Oh, that's right, it was four thousand, four thousand was the limit, and they wanted ninety-two thousand, ninety-two hundred and fifty.
It's a special permit.
Right. But they need to get that before they could even...
No, that's different.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's where I, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Variance is if it says no, then you gotta go with that. Special permit means you can do it.
You might...
They're taking a risk going in that direction, it might be a waste of time, but that's...
That's what I was trying to figure out with your discussion.
Variance is in special permits, a little different, not always. All right, so that's good, so I will instruct, um, actually, you're in charge of...
The railroad.
The railroad.
Yes, one of them.
So if you instruct them, tell them, so there's, the, the problem is we have an open, um...
Meeting.
Open meeting, so if you could ask them to, to, with, I guess they would withdraw, would be the best thing. Otherwise, at the next meeting, they'll say, we open the meeting and then we close it, we say, we're not gonna give them this, and they get a variance. So, you know, everything, it's better for them to withdraw without, um...
Do we need to address the fees at all, or anything? Well, I mean, have they paid fees already for their, their permits?
Yeah, so we can give back money.
That's what I'm saying, so you're gonna give them back their money.
But they was the two fifty...
Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm just trying to clarify that, that, you know, if we're, if we're saying it was a mistake, then they get their money back, that's all.
Exactly.
It's not a big deal to them, really, twenty fifty dollars.
And, and I think the alternative is, it's fine, if they wanna push it, then we just, we just open the hearing, we close it, and then we vote no. They don't have a variance, so we have to vote no. So that's kind of... And I tried to make that clear to Kyle, who came right back and said, oh, can I invite the planning board to come walk the site? And can we have a meeting with the butters? But it's like, no, you gotta get a variance, I said, you gotta get a variance first. And at the same time, Concom is involved there, and the, um, the PIP, the, the public information process with the railroad yard. So I've, I've spoken to Lynn Rose, who's been following up on, you know, the Brownsfield issues up at the railroad yard, Lake Asphalt. Potentially, we need to know if any of this, uh, the territory that they wanna deal with has anything to do with that. So that's another issue that they need to clean up and make sure it's, it's straight before they come to us. Otherwise, it will end up going back to that, and it will take twice as long. And Lynn's now aware of it, and she's trying to get the maps out and everything, so... So this is the kind of stuff I've been doing this past month, and I tell you, it takes a lot of hours, so I appreciate spreading the work out a little bit. Um, it's really a lot. All right, um, next up.
John, Wendy, so what's the next meeting regarding the railroad yard road? It, it's going to which board now?
Twenty, it's going...
Our advice.
So we have, we have an open meeting. Um, it was, uh, right, continue to November.
That's the November one, okay.
But hopefully they'll withdraw it, or that something will happen before that.
So that there's more...
Otherwise, it's gonna be continued forever, so. All right, moving on, Marigan Way, Dumont Company, I have no information about this, I don't see anything in the folder. Does anybody know why it's on the agenda?
It's fenced off, I'll tell you that, through my backyard.
I can tell you anything you wanna know about it.
You're in the planning board?
There's nothing to do with the planning board, so I don't know why you're talking about this.
Yeah, it's not, um, even...
They act as the planning board for that parcel.
They met with the Conservation Commission, and they're meeting with, I believe, the Select Board next week.
Well, the Select Board are the site plan review people, right?
For that.
Oh, that's right, we are the stormwater. We're not, we are the stormwater too? Oh, my God.
Yeah, I think we gave that whole section one to them.
That's right, you're right. It's a company in Greenfield, and they've got a couple of different places.
They're in a big area.
Yeah.
They're in a big area.
I saw the last one that was going.
Yeah, you mean the Alana?
No.
Oh.
The bakery.
Okay. How's that doing?
What do you see?
Nothing.
Exactly.
Now, they can sell that land for whatever they want.
But what is Dumont Company?
It's a machine shop. So it does say, in forty-seven thirty, permitted in special permit, DEP, or the Select Board. Where does it say about the storm?
I thought the stormwater was still ours, but I don't know.
You know, remember, it's, it's in the section. I know the, um...
Site plan is...
Town, the town thing, they didn't come to us, I know that, but that's partly because it's a town thing, I guess, but... Stormwater management, Conservation Commission. It just says, consistency with mass stormwater management policy, all development should comply with D E P stormwater regulations. All right, so it's DEP with the stormwater regulations, maybe that's why, instead of, um, it doesn't say, have to apply it to the town.
I thought we adopted the DEPs.
We did, and we added a tweet to it, but it's mostly, yeah. All right, Thirty-one Elm Street, Cumberland Farms Facility. So I asked, um, that this be put on, because, so if you remember, back in March of two thousand seventeen, we approved the site plan review and the stormwater, and it had some conditions on it. And, um, they've done their building and everything, and, um, it's, the, the main access point, entrance and exit off of Route Five and Ten is not complete. Yet they were every, they were, um, they were given a temporary certificate of occupancy by the, by the town building inspector. So I've had discussions over the past month or two with people in the town, and we were, I was always told that, um, one, we were gonna, that the planning board would be notified if there was gonna be a temporary, uh, certificate of occupancy. And my position was that, well, we did the site plan review, and this entrance and exit was an important aspect to that building. And we talked a lot about it, and we had a lot of resident comments about that.
Right, and I, I think the homeowners even said that they could not do the project without that access, because there was no way to do it again.
Well, they, it seems to me that they went to the state, and when they went to the state, they had two, two, um, curb cuts on Elm Street and one on Five and Ten, and they came back and said that this...
Wait, hold on, I mean, you're going, wait. The site plan we approved, at, at, entrance and exit on Five and Ten, and one on Elm Street.
Okay, all right.
That's what we approved.
All right.
And that's what they're intending, that's what they're doing, but they haven't completed it. Normally, until you complete what was approved, you don't...
Get it.
Open.
Yep.
So my question is, um, and this is partly a procedural question, as well as a specific, is what, what is the, we, we tend not to, when we approve things, we don't, things don't come back to us usually, before people get the certificate of completions. And we don't always know, and it's really our, our enforcement officer who takes care of that. I, I would say that right now, I don't know if everybody's aware, that we don't have a full-time building inspector.
I was just gonna ask that question, who is the building inspector now?
So Dick is back to being the temporary.
Dick is temporary, David Jensen is also temporary.
So, and Dick is also the health inspector, right? So, you know, we got sort of...
But what was that reversal that was in here that I read about in the email? That, that the primary entrance was gonna be on Five and Ten instead of Elm Street? And so there was some secondary, or I don't know, do you remember that part of that?
We were, we had talked about how it was, you know, all the, that's only an entrance, and it was all north...
It's only northbound connected.
Northbound entrance and exit.
Entrance and exit.
But somehow that was called a primary access in this email.
I don't know if anybody called it a primary, but my eyes, it's not the primary.
No, it's not. It was never supposed to be, that's right.
Which, which one do you think is primary?
I wouldn't think the Five and Ten one, it's because it's limited, you can only go anywhere, take a right turn on.
I was just saying, but somewhere in this email, John, that I just, I downloaded today, and when I was reading through it, it said something about somehow they were complaining, they were saying that, that the entrances were swamped or something. Okay, I'm, I...
What started all this problem is that everything was permitted, and everything was near completion. A member of the DEP drove by and felt that there should've been a longer piece of silk fence near the construction site. So he stopped, and he asked him about it, and the contractor said he was unaware that need to go that far down. So they were issued, uh, a cease and desist order. And it's taken three weeks to go through the process to get that order lifted. Everything is sitting their way to be completed, and I think they are, they're gonna start on Monday. They were issued a temporary occupancy commitment until the tenth of November, at which time that entrance will be completed. And it was only because they had to wait for the paperwork to go through Boston, that it's not completed now. The building inspector, the zoning enforcement agent, along with the chief of police and the highway superintendent, made Cumberland Farms take an empty, uh, gas tanker... made Cumberland Farms take an empty gas tanker and see how they could enter that facility off of Elm Street, and there was no problems without crossing lanes, staying within the bounds that a, a regular vehicle would need. So they felt there was no public safety issue, everything else has complied with all of our regulations except for that. So they were issued a temporary occupancy, which will expire on the tenth of, um, November. By that time, that entrance should be done.
This is the email here, John, have you got it, you found it, or you, that's the one that's talking about that stuff, about the end?
That's what I wrote, yeah.
Okay, well, that's the one I was reading, and that's the one I was talking about. They claimed that five and ten was an extra one, it was not the primary one.
No, they, they, they said five and ten is the main.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that they, they reversed it because Elm Street was supposed to be the main one. Elm Street's supposed to be the main one, that was a supplemental one that only dealt with northbound traffic. In and out, five and ten.
So what the attorney said back in January to the zoning board was that, um, that the main entrance and exit are on to and off of five and ten, and the Elm Street entrance and exit is extra.
Which I think is backwards.
No, that's what they were claiming because at, at the time, now they're claiming the opposite. Now they're claiming that, oh, five and ten was not so important, that we should...
Well, I don't think that they're saying it's not so important, I mean, there was a lot of issues too, even the piece, I, I don't know the gentleman's name from the state was there as well, and he cited the fact that the Irving Station only has one entrance and exit, so does in Motel Six. I mean, the, uh, there's other businesses on Elm Street that only have one entrance, and then, but they wanted to make sure that public safety was involved, that, you know, not amped at all, and that's why they watched the truck make its deliveries and stuff like that. And I do believe that the building inspectors in possession of a letter from Cumberland Farms saying that they will not make, you know, midday gasoline...
Only nice time.
Yeah, so...
I was wondering, do we, is there any limitation on when that's supposed to be opened, is that...
Six weeks.
No, is it twenty-four hours, or is it supposed to close at night?
Oh, oh, pretty much hours.
I think it's open twenty-four hours.
We didn't put any...
No, they, that was part of the, we asked that question. But Kip, when you say one driveway, that was, that's a limited access road, so like...
What's that?
Five and ten, when they first moved it.
That's northbound, oh, yeah.
And so that, that curb cut that Cumberland's got never existed, those other places had those curb cuts. So that was their main access.
Right, but they, they applied for it, and it was granted, uh, those access.
Yeah, but they, and we went through it, Phil Henry, I asked the question, I said, "Do you have that curb cut?" And they go, "Yes." And they didn't have it, they just got it just fairly recently, that building was all up before they got that curb cut from the state granted.
Yes.
So from now on, I think we gotta be more diligent and, and say, "Yes, we'd like to see it in writing." They said, "No, the state won't ever put it in writing." Well, I don't know if that was the case or not.
Yeah, we were lied to, very simply.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, how so, I mean, the state did grant it to them.
Well, they kept saying, "We got it, we got it, we got it."
They did it, but they didn't. It's, so they, they, they got the permission to proceed, they, they built, and then it's a, it's one of those, uh, better to ask forgiveness than permission.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that, I mean, it takes a long time for the state to process paperwork, we know that. You know, they wouldn't have started it without some assurance from the state.
Okay.
So again, part of this is procedural, because as I sent out in the email to all of you and others today is that the planning board's decision dated March eighth, two thousand seventeen included the following condition, attached the stormwater permit in particular. And it says that, um, "Upon receipt and approval of the final inspection and reports, and/or upon otherwise determining that all work was completed in conformance, in conformance with the regulations, the planning board, as the stormwater authority, will issue a letter certifying completion." We, we...
We never certify.
We never get final plans back and then certify completion and then allow the certificate of occupancy to happen. And so basically, we've, you know, we're, we don't follow up on what we say in our decisions. And I don't think this is the first time, but this is the time when I actually specifically asked the building inspector, I said, "This is a zoning board issue, this is a site plan, we approved it with this entrance and exit on five and ten, it shouldn't open until that's built." And the building inspector, along with the chief of police and potential Select Board, made this decision to give them the certificate of occupancy, and I just wanna make that known. And if that's fine, then that's fine, but I didn't know that as the chair of the planning board, I thought this should come back to the planning board and that our site plan review decisions mean something. So I'd just like to put that in on the right.
I think that they do mean something, I, I think that this was a temporary, um, thing to take care of a mistake, and I don't see that there's any harm or fault. The, all of the wetland stuff has been completed, we just haven't gotten the report from the, the architects.
That's the site plan we approved.
I understand, John, but it's, it's...
It's not what's there.
The building inspector didn't override the planning board, it's just a temporary thing, if that's not there by the sixth, then they will have an occupancy commitment to continue.
But that wasn't what was agreed upon. That, that's, that's the point, it's... The sixth of what?
And I've asked the building inspector to, to come to the meetings and apparently he's not able to. I just, again, I, I think communication is part of it, it's not, maybe the decision is right, but I think communication and keeping us...
Kip, what sixth of what month? Sixth of...
The tenth, I think, I'm sorry, the tenth of November.
Of November?
Yeah.
That's their...
That's their cutoff date.
Cause I know there's a lot of work to do there, I mean, they're gonna strike the roads, they're gonna do all kinds of stuff up there. That's why it's...
Does the planning board have the authority to do a cease and desist like the other boards did, or no?
Yeah, no, the enforcement agent is the building inspector.
Enforcement agent, and I mean, this, this didn't happen willy-nilly, there was a lot of discussion between a lot of people, and we even got a decision from the town lawyer, it was up to the building inspector.
And, well, I, we can look at the town attorney, the town attorney recommended not issuing a temporary certificate of occupancy.
Well, not for particular reasons.
For, for something that's fairly major, such as a, uh...
Public safety.
And, I'm not saying, public safety, the police chief, everybody checked, so public is not, the safety of the public is, is okay. I'm not arguing that. Whether there might be more traffic going on or something, that's, you know, that, that still might happen. So part of it is, I just, it's gonna go back to procedures that I think we tighten up a little bit. And, and I'll maybe add on at this point, but this is why we've often asked that there be someone in the town hall who supports us, and that's this new position that I think is being advertised, could do that. Because I think these are the kinda things that go between the lines sometimes. Administrative assistant has some things in there about supporting the planning board, that position? Cause Priscilla's mainly working with Concom and...
She's your name, Tony?
No, she's there, uh, I think that's a part-time position, so we're not gonna get full-time. But these are just, I wanna just highlight it, as, as, as we learn more, we should improve, I guess is what I hope.
And with more projects, with more, we, we want that oversight, we wanna be able to feel like we're sitting here talking about these things and then, then follow through with it.
As, as a bigger picture, it's my point of view, that we do have a, an important responsibility, but we're all volunteers, it's very part-time, and that there's a lot of general laws on timelines, and we do not do things timely. I mean, we think we do, but how many, every project that comes in front of us, we have people sign extensions, extensions. One of these days, somebody's gonna say, "Sorry, folks," and you're gonna deny them, they're gonna, you know, you, the world can't, the, the world is very courteous to us because we work at a snail's pace and understandable, because we're all volunteers, we can't come here every night, we can't spend all our hours during the day. And, and that's why, you know, maybe we put our other people, like the building inspector, in these precarious positions that we have to make a decision. You know, corporate lawyers are calling, saying, "Well, we need to do this, everything is done, but it's not our fault here." You know, I can see how things happen, it's not like they're bending rules saying, "You don't have to have this." We understand your situation, and these are, this is a, a roadmap as to how you can get something if you want, but you have to understand that there's a deadline and consequences to that, and that is that if you don't have this completed, then you're gonna shut...
Right, then, then you'll get a December tenth, uh, extension.
So I guess, I, I don't...
Just, "Oh, you better have it done, or else it'll go to December tenth."
I'm just saying that this is how it is, I mean, and you know, John, I mean, even where you work, I mean, things happen, you know? Well...
So I guess the other question I have is, um, and we've talked about this a lot, that we put these conditions on and then someone else's, the enforcement has, and, um, I'm wondering if we ask the building inspector to come more, to come to some, more of our meetings than happened, and again, part of that, I think, because we're, we're short-staffed right now. But that would be a recommendation that I'd have, is we often have questions for, you know, that have to do with the building inspector and the monitoring. And we've had two meetings over the past month, and it would have been appropriate for me, I think, to have a building inspector say that this was going on, inform the planning board at least.
Well, somebody from the last, our last meeting came from the town and thought it was a safety issue, and...
And we said yes, and we thought it was a safety issue too.
Yeah, we thought we agreed with them, and I was surprised to see it opening because I didn't think it was gonna...
Because we said at the last meeting, she, when that was brought to us, we said, "Yeah, no, we feel strongly." That was part of our issue with the project in the first place was traffic patterns and the safety of that spot. So I, 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 Roger's right, we weren't asked and we...
Gave her recommendation, the attorney gave the recommendation, and, and, so, you know, the decision was made, and I, I think potentially through the right procedures, but I think we gotta look at those procedures and part of it is communication.
It'll be difficult for a little while, I mean, until we have a full-time building inspector, because, you know, both the people are very limited in their hours, and they actually work more hours than they're paid for, so when they're asked to come here tonight, you know, it's difficult.
And again, and, you know, I've been on this board for a long time, and it just hasn't really arisen much, but I just, this is, this is the biggest issue I've seen.
What do we do about the dinosaurs, that's what I'm wondering.
I mean...
It's been on for a long time.
They, they wanna extinct.
In the meadows.
John, can I bring up one more question about the Cumberland Farms, uh, you know, over the past, how many years that we've been here, uh, we've had a lot of people out in the audience enraged about signage in this town. We spent countless hours, as you're aware, on signage. When I pull up to Elm Street, I see a sign that I thought the intent was, with our signed bylaws, not to have, um, internally lit, you know, I, 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 I don't know if I'm right or not, but I, I think our bylaws say no internally lit signs.
I believe they got a special permit, and I have, I asked to have...
I think they came up at our meeting and they've got, they said they had one, they had one at the old store, they just wanted to move it to the new store.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's not the same physical sign, but it's a, it's, they had a, uh, interment lit sign at the old store, so they got one to the new.
Okay, so, yeah, so John Q. Public can't have it, but, yeah, I get it.
Well, if they hadn't had one at the store, they couldn't, couldn't have had a new one unless they...
It's taller than allowed, and they got a special permit, let me see if it's in here. Because that was a, a question. And there is a nice sign that points to Mount Shercoe in downtown South Deerfield that we requested, I, I wondered if that's smaller than what we could ask about. So that's, that's what we should double-check, that they did get that special permit, because it doesn't say...
I knew there was a height.
There was a height there.
Yeah.
And a, and a, and a lit part of it too.
No, I don't remember that part, but you could...
I thought, I remembered them, you know, saying that they wanted to continue the internal sign that they, like they just had down there.
I think that...
I think that came up.
Yeah, I don't think that was the precedent for controlling the back there.
Well, it's not really grandfather, because it's in a new location, but it just, you know, it's, um, it was kinda like a grandfather's thing.
Kind of, yeah.
I would say a grandfather thing would go if the new place that takes over where the old Cumbies was wanted to continue utilizing that sign.
That's more of a grandfather law.
That would be the grandfather.
Don't we also have a bylaw that says no neon signs in town? And yet there's three establishments in the center of town that all have neon signs in them.
Well, it's, uh, neon signs internally lit, but it comes up to the, um, I don't know which ones you're talking to specifically, but, um...
Any of the type of stores or bars.
Yeah, but some of it comes, there's different... Signage has different, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, it's just, I, I think there's different types of signage, if it's for one purpose, it's different than the other, I don't know, but... But the point is, is that sign that is there, I think, is what the intent was by the people of the town of Deerfield not to have in town. That's the point that I'm making. And they, that's exactly what they don't, didn't wanna see, and that's exactly what they got, so shred the zoning book again.
So I'm gonna, um, so I'll follow up with this, I wanna check on how, how they got permission to do that sign, if they did, if they didn't, then it should come down, but if they got it, we should be clear how they got it, I think it was special permit through the CEP, both on the height and the...
And if it was, then we need to revisit signs and make a sign like that by right, because the same thing's gonna happen the next time.
Well, or, well, I mean, that's the special permit process is to allow for things there. And then the other, um, so is that some of the people, I, I, I want some input here, is do you, do we think the planning board should hear from the building inspector more often when it comes to, uh, offering temporary certificate of occupancies on things that we've already made?
I think we should get advice from whoever the building inspector is, yes, because like you say, it's his full-time job. Think he would be more educated on a lot of the stuff that we discuss than we are. And he's an enforcement officer.
Keep us updated, I mean, if that's, it's, it's one thing to hear from somebody like me, it's another thing for the person who says, "This is what I'd like to do, here's why I'd like to do it, here's, you know, and I, I think it's great that we've got Kip here, but honestly, we should be hearing from the agent himself, not necessarily...
But with the way that we, but I don't, I think, how long has it been that we've had any kind of a building inspector that was here for any period of time? You know?
I'm, I'm not going to the past, I'm asking...
Well, I, I know, but we can, we can ask, we can ask for something we can't get and, and make an issue or something, but how do you, how do you force something at all?
I was gonna say, Dick has been the building inspector for quite a while.
He's come a lot.
Well, he's always been the filling in one.
No.
Oh, he's been a building inspector for fifteen years.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Then if you have no inspector, you cut his hours maybe, but then you...
No, I thought he was... Cause, okay, any other reasonable business? No, that wasn't, hasn't, he hasn't been for fifteen years, has he?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, Kip, getting back to your call, and part of the reason for report is we can kinda represent the residents too, so it's not that we're the experts, they, hopefully, building inspectors are more experts, but getting, bouncing things off of us and informing us, I think that's respectful to the residents, that's what we're here for.
But I think Dick did notify you that he was gonna do that, didn't he?
No.
He notified me that he wasn't gonna do it unless he talked to us about it.
He notified you, it wasn't at a meeting, Kip.
No, it wasn't at a meeting, no, no.
Maybe that's built up by, uh...
It was our last meeting.
The excitement about this is that I feel like I was scared to death.
Almost like there was something going on behind the scenes, huh?
Stop the yamikis.
So that's, I think we know what's going on with our continuations, three brake projects, taking care of these other two, is there any other business that is not on the agenda that anybody has?
I just have one question, is the Marigan Way totally off our plate, did we finally decide that, so it's, it's irrelevant to us?
I think we've never heard of it.
Okay.
Nor will it be.
Okay, that's all I wanna do.
Yeah, it's in the EPD, it's in the Escalated Prairie District.
I'm just gonna put down ZPD, and we don't have any responsibility there.
Yeah, so maybe, yeah.
Kip?
Yes, sir.
It sounds like that's what we were looking for down at the EPD, this, this particular type of company, if it's a machine shop type company, am I correct when I say that?
Oh, yeah.
I guess I'm unclear as to what you mean, what we were looking for. Well, it was, you know, it was to clean, create decent jo, well-paying jobs, I mean, that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, and then they asked the town to clean up that...
The overall project is, the owners are gonna do a real nice job, they're working hand-in-hand with the people from the bakery. I don't know if the bakery people are gonna be moving as quickly to put up their facility, but they're, they're working really well.
How many people do they think that they'll employ at that particular location?
I, I believe around a hundred.
Wow, that's, that's a lot. Great.
Is that four, what hours of operation are they?
I think...
Three shifts or just...
First up, one shift.
Seven, seven to four or something.
Wow, it's gonna be a pretty big building, a hundred people.
Uh, I think it's twenty-five thousand square feet.
One-four or...
One-four.
Thirty feet tall in front and about twenty feet tall in the back side, this, the roof's gonna be slanted so they can take advantage of solar. Okay.
Very good, hearing no other business, is any, oh, so we have, the next meeting is October twenty-ninth. And that's at least for the, uh...
At seven o'clock, right?
At seven o'clock, right?
Old Frontier Set Right Road project, and then there might be other things on that agenda, at seven o'clock.
Uh, then I, I guess I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to dissolve? I'll second the motion.
Adjourn.
You can adjourn, are you, you're gonna continue this meeting for another time?
For no specific reason.
No, we're ending this meeting.
That's what he said, he said adjourn.
Adjourn means go to another one.
No.
That's what the town said.
Adjourn is adjourn.
I understand, no.
I don't know, motion, uh...
I think I heard seven zero zero, is that right?
Yeah, you did, you heard seven zero.
Seven zero zero, okay. At eight thirty-four, at eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four.
Eight thirty-four.